Room at the Town Hall, one at Calf Square, and we are being recorded live to be played on WCAT-TV. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Present. Please rise to the Tenth of Allegiance, and I will ask for a, to everyone to remain standing after for a moment of silence in memory of Paul Gallivan. Mr. Luteri, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the AIR States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Howard, can you give us a few words about Mr. Gallivan?
Yes. Paul Gallivan was a former custodian for the Winthrop Public Schools. He also worked on our athletic fields, lining the fields for our students. He also drove the Zamboni down at our Mike Rizzioni Center for student athletes as well. Paul was also inducted into the Winthrop High School Hall of Fame in 2018 for excellent service with the Winthrop fields and ranks.
We are open for public comment, but seeing none, I will move along. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 24th?
Go move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Luteri, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Abstentions? Abstain. Motion passes. May I have a motion for warrant SVW 23-19 in the amount of $304,578.21? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW 23-22 in the amount of $870,174.11? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Abstain.
Mr. Matucci?
Abstain.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW 23-23 in the amount of $823,146.71? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Abstain.
Mr. Matucci?
Abstain.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Do we have a curriculum subcommittee report, or is it too soon? Okay. You know, you meant tonight. The superintendent's report, please.
So, as you are all aware, we are going through a targeted review with the Department of Education, and the firm with the title AIR is here starting, they actually started Friday, where they spent a significant amount of time with me, probably asked me every question that you could potentially ask about a public school. And we did not finish, so I will be finishing up with them on Wednesday to give them some more information. Today, they came, and they started off at the Cummings School utilizing Laurie's office to do interviews of some of the stakeholder groups that we put together. The union, teachers' union was there. Who else?
We had a group of teachers from the ATC.
Right.
We had a group of specialists, special education, OT, PT. We had a group with all of the psychologists and all the adjustment counselors. We had a group of parents. We had roughly two different parents from each school, each level participate. They spent about an hour and a half of the day.
Yep.
And...
They were also at the high school doing observations today, classroom observations as well.
And then tomorrow, they'll be at the middle school doing classroom observations. Wednesday, they'll do another set round of focus groups, with the school included, on Wednesday, and they'll be doing their classroom observations at the ATC. And then they'll finish up Thursday with their classroom observations at Fort, and the parent Zoom meeting at 1:00 p.m. on Thursday.
We'll be reminding the parents. We've sent something out to the parents to invite them to the Zoom meeting. They had to sign up through a document that AIR put out. At first, the document had, I think it was Hudson or Holbrook, Holbrook Public Schools who you clicked on for Winthrop, and it said, "How long has your child been a student at the Holbrook Public Schools?" So after a deep breath and a few quick phone calls from Laurie and I, we did get that rectified. So, parents, we're able to sign up. It's usually me when I do those letters out to parents. I check it 400 times, I send it to myself, and I check it again. But sometimes, when you're not in control of things, things get a little wonky. So thankfully, a parent jumped on it right away and saw it and let us know. So we got that taken care of. So they'll be here through Thursday.
Lisa, do they give you pretty much a scope of questions they're going to ask, or anything? So have you, were you asked a lot of questions that you didn't anticipate getting asked?
I wouldn't say I didn't anticipate the questions, but they're sort of all over the map, so they don't go on any, like, I like things that are done in a strategic manner. So if we're going to talk about finance, let's stick with finance. If we're going to talk about management of staff, let's stick with that. And they were kind of all over the map, bouncing back and forth with questions, which was fine, but when you're talking to one person and you're asking questions about the global management and leadership of the school, it becomes, becomes a little bit difficult. That's why we're going to do another round, because I wasn't able to finish, they weren't able to finish their questions with me. There were several. But it does, it gives you a sense of, I don't know, a sense of accomplishment when you're talking to them and they're asking you about the things, you know, that you do here in the school district. And when you start to reflect on that, and you sit back and you say, "Wow, that was a lot. We're not even done yet." So it's, it's actually fun. I don't know if I'd categorize it as fun, but it does, it does give you, you sort of self-reflect on what's going on. And I've just done my, my own self-reflection for the school committee for my goals, and we had written the whole self-reflection for the school district. But then they come back, and it's not like a quiz on your self-reflection. They're asking you to go a little bit deeper. So that was, that was good. It's time well spent. They'll probably not produce a report for a couple of months, so this particular group is hired by the Department of Education to come out and do this work. And then they turn all of their data and what they have found back to the Department of Education. And then the Department of Education formulates a report that they, I believe they first share it with us, but it does get posted on the Department of Education's website as well. So all the years past that they've done, they haven't done Winthrop in the past, which was interesting. Some schools have been done two or three times. So more, I put in your pack at the job fair, and I had told you that we were reaching out, trying to go beyond what we typically do through school spring and reaching out to colleges and different school districts and just word of mouth around town for positions that we have open. So through the five district partnership, we decided to do a job fair, and it was sort of the brainchild of a bunch of school districts together. And it was the first one that we had done. I think they did one right before COVID, somewhere around that timeframe. A large amount of people that showed up, it was at Chelsea High School. So we took all of our principals, including our new principal of the Gorman Fort Banks, which was nice to be able to spend some time with him and the whole leadership team. Nick, Nick Bisher, who is our HR generalist, he came as well and did a lot of the coordination, bought all the candy to bring, because we had to get, we had to woo people to our table. And so we figured we'd do that with, with candy. And, and it was very interesting to see who was attending. One of the other things that, that both Nick and Laurie thought of is bringing somebody with us, because we knew we were going to have people who didn't speak English. So we were able to bring, the name is going to escape me now. Orelli Davis and Andrea with us, both secretaries who speak Portuguese and English. So it was really nice to have them with us, and we found out how valuable it was to have them with us when a fair amount of people we didn't have the ability to communicate with. It was interesting to see what people were looking for, what types of jobs people were looking for, and be able to have some conversation with them about their backgrounds. So quite a few people looking for jobs, cafeteria staff, lunch monitors, paraprofessionals, custodial staff, handfuls of people looking for teaching positions, not as many as I expected, overall, you know, with all the schools that were there. But I do think it was beneficial. We collected probably 30-plus people signed into the Winthrop Public Schools. We were able to talk to them a little bit about our school. We brought information for them so they could understand. We had on-the-spot interviews, so, which are sort of on-the-spot interviews that inviting them to come in and talk to us further. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to bring some more folks back to the district from other areas of town. So Chelsea was there, Everett was there, Medford?
Revere.
And Revere and Medford. So it was the first one we had done, but I, you know, I think we'll find some benefit from it, and we're going to follow up with those folks who came as well. Just a couple of other things. Playground at the Cummings School, I sent you sort of a wonky picture in your file, and I wanted to just pique your interest so that you would know what we were doing. So through Essar Funding, and we've talked a lot about using Essar funds for one-time improvements in the school that are going to last us for a period of time. And one of the things that we've been having lots of issues with is the, the grading around the playground of the Cummings School. We had a manhole cover that was sticking up that was a tripable, not to mention the fact that it, it looked kind of, yeah, it's a dust bowl. It looked kind of lousy, and kids, obviously, they like the dirt. So we wanted to, to put some more playable surface there, as well as some other improvements out there. So they raised and lowered the manholes and regraded them level with the asphalt. They removed old pressure-treated timber and installed new pressure-treated timber in two different areas of the playground. So if you ever want to go over, Andrea O'Leary, I'm sure will tour you, because she likes it. They paved 4,300 square feet of area adjacent to that playground that used to all be dirt. And they also paved underneath the built-in table that's alongside the playground as well. We also were fortunate and kind of unexpected to get a visit from a town worker who came in to talk to me about Winthrop Loves Trees, donating some trees. So that was an added plus to put some greenery around there and give it a little bit of shade, because it's not very shady back there, as you know. We are a little worried about making sure that, you know, it's hard when you're not there on the weekends and you're not outside, you know, at night around that area. We do have cameras, some newer cameras, some upgrades in our cameras, another gift of Essar III. But those new trees, we are a little worried about. So they're going to be young trees, and we just want to make sure that they don't, they don't get destroyed. So we can keep an eye on our kids when we have them outside and get them invested in, you know, watering the trees and understanding why we need them. But it's the sort of off-school time that we have a little bit of concern about, but we will pay close attention to that. Also, another gift that we received, Senator Edwards is hosting a viewing party at the AMC Theater on the Boston Common on the 26th for the premiere of Little Mermaid. And I had reached out to her, as you know, for some conversation along with Jen Paulo around providing us with some funds through the state, some one-time funds for translation, which sparked a whole bunch of different conversations that were really good conversations. Senator Edwards talked about her own past history in going to school and some of the things she found value in. And so she's been reaching out to me, saying, "Hey, you know, I'm, I have this fundraiser, not a fundraiser, I have these funds to, going to purchase these tickets, like to include Winthrop Public School students." So they gave us 35 tickets for students in grade seven and eight. So worked with Brian Curly and the school adjustment counselor and the guidance counselor in that building, and they identified a group of students and offered the tickets to the students. So one of the things, it's a little different about Winthrop, as you know, is our students don't often, especially at that age, go into the city of Boston on their own. So we did ask if there were going to be tickets that parents could purchase. And there aren't going to be tickets for parents, but we were allowed to pair a student with a parent, which was pretty good. So, and I think that will increase the likelihood that they'll actually go. And so she is also working on getting, providing some snacks for the students while they're there, because I haven't been to the movies in about 20 years, but according to my kids, you know, every time they go, they need 50 bucks. So I'm either getting scammed, or popcorn's more expensive. So she's working on that as well, so we were thankful for that. I also provided you, I think two meetings ago, with some information, I think you accepted a new grant for 21st Century. And it was for an internship that we are able to enhance our summer programs to benefit all of our students by providing a supervised program for high school students to be able to work at 21st and to be able to intern there and also work in a capacity as a teacher's aide. So that timeframe spans from now, where we have students in there already, throughout the summer. Those students will be matched with mentors, so those will be seasoned after-school program teachers that have three years or more experience. And their goal will be to support students and train them in sort of all the aspects of, of being a mentor in the summer program and working with students. It's our goal that the participation interns will get, develop a keen understanding of the important role that after-school time plays for students in keeping them busy and engaged in the community throughout the summer. So the interns work 10 hours a week during the school year, and they'll get about 20 hours a week during the summer. So we plan to hire eight interns for the summer, and the preference and part of the grant that we wrote was to focus on students who are bilingual. And that is because we have a number of students that are bilingual or non-English speaking in the 21st Century program. And through the oversight and observation of the current staff, we found that the students were sort of getting in silos in their own little groups and not really communicating with other students. So we thought this would be a good way to start to engage them and make, have them make friends and, and just get them into group activities, and also to be able to better communicate with our parents. So we have, right now, we have four interns. They're going to work for six weeks during the school year. I believe they've started two weeks ago or so, maybe even a little more. And then we'll add four more interns over the summer, and the summer is a six-week program. Few, few things that are going on within the school. Kindergarten registration is hot and heavy. I was there this morning. We were having people come in in five, five-minute intervals to do the, to do the, I got stressed out just walking in the door, because everything was going so quickly. So that is continuing. We had about 100 people registered to register. So they had to make an appointment, bring their packet, their packet gets checked, we have conversation with them, and, and then we start to build that list. So it's, this is typical to get about 100 before the school year starts, and then many more will probably drip in throughout the course of the summer. And typically, the first week of September, we get another bump. So we'll keep an eye on that. Friday, the 12th, is staff, there'll be a staff appreciation lunch at the fort. And this week at the ATC, it was Teacher Appreciation Week, as you know, and we gave the shout-out to all of our staff. And today, this week is Nurse Appreciation Week. So if you see a nurse, hug her. I get two in my house that I can hang on to that will hopefully take care of me. But if you, if you happen to come across a nurse, please let them know how much you appreciate them. This fifth grade is going to take the MCAS on Tuesday, May 9th, and again on Thursday, May 11th. Let me see. Fifth grade families, because it's, we're starting to do all these transitions now, so we're doing end-of-the-year activities. Fifth grade families have been notified of all of the end-of-the-year activities that we have in their weekly shout-out from Mrs. O'Leary. First Annual Athiti Cummings Student Showcase is scheduled for June 1st from 6:00 to 7:30. So save that date if you want to go. That's an exciting event. And for the month of May, they are collecting kind coins. There is a jar in every classroom for donations that will benefit the marshes and beaches around Winthrop. So they are working and invested in, in doing that. Student interns, so couple of, couple of items for, one second. Targeted review. Just give me one second. Public relations. So we neglected to, to congratulate one of our own staff members for running the Boston Marathon, so Jade Santangelo, shout-out to her. I don't know how we missed her. The town of Winthrop has, as you all know, has established the fire fund, the fire relief fund, to assist the many families and residents affected by the fire on April 21st. There's a link on the town's website. We've had a lot of people reach out to us. So we have, our PTOs have, at the Cummings School and at the Fort Banks have both conducted fundraisers. So we've hooked up with them to talk to them about how they may want to utilize those funds. We had two stu, three students, I believe, at the Cummings, and quite a few, seven, I believe, at the Fort Banks. So we'll work with the PTO to give them advice. They can use the funds and distribute them however they want, if they want to go through the town and give them to the town, or if they choose to do individual families, they may do that as well. I did attend a senior center activity last week, in which the town brought in all kinds of supporting agencies to help the families, and the families all arrived when they could throughout the day between, I think, 10 o'clock and 2 o'clock or something like that. I went down there around 12, and it was loaded with people. But people were getting assistance and direction, which was really, really helpful. We had a few staff members from the school rotating through to be able to support our parents and answer any questions they may have. They were distributing everything from, you know, food for pets, big bags of dog food and cat food, to bags that contain toiletries. And then they had housing, public housing there. I believe, Jim, they had some realtors from the town.
They did. Some homeowners.
Yeah, trying to assist people with housing. From the school's perspective, we have a handful of students that are housed at the Red Roof Inn in Saugus, and we have been working to get transportation companies to be able to get the students and bring them back to the school. An update from Jen O'Connell today was that they are able to fully start, and so it's an outside group, so when you're transporting little ones, you need to make sure you have a 7D driver, you need to make sure you have seat belts and car seats. We had, I think, five of our students who are preschool students, so they're little, still in either car seats or booster seats. The other thing they were providing at the senior center was access to clothing through, I believe it was the Methodist Church, that did a great outreach, and people from the community really stepped up. And when I looked at the organization of just the shoes alone, you know, putting shoes out by size so that families could come in and not be stressed out and just grab a bag and grab shoes that would fit themselves or their children, and clothing. So we continue to communicate with the town manager. Any, anytime there's a tragedy in town, you know, the likelihood that there's a family that has children in our schools or, or somebody who works with us is very high. So having that communication with, with the town manager and the town council has been really, really helpful. Everybody does want to help, but the coordination of efforts is critical in something like this, so that people are getting help in a timely fashion. And so that continues to, to be being worked upon by the town. Just talked about that. The high school drama society spring production is Lily's Purple Plastic Purse, and that's on the 12th. That's at 7:00, and then again on the 13th at 2:00 p.m. I want to congratulate, congratulate our second grade winners and distinctions for the MWRA poster contest. So the MWRA will send us out an email saying they're having a poster contest, and then we get it to the schools and offer it to our kids. So Jackson Stone took first place, Sophia Walker took second place, and then honorable mention, Gianna Bianquino, Quinn Howington, Gavin Guthro, Zakara Alad Kaneski, Colin O'Brien, Giovanna Rivera, Hafasa Kitabab was finalist as well, and Rihanna Kitabab was also a finalist. That's exciting for our students. The class of 2026 is selling Viking Beach towels. They are very cool, just so you know, and absorbent. They are $30 apiece, and it is on the Winthrop High School website, but you can also reach out to Kristen Bonopane at kristen, K-R-I-S-T-E-N dot Bonopane, B-U-O-N-O-P-A-N-E at gmail.com, and that is on the high school website. Congratulations to Mia Norris and Corinne Powell, being named MIA Women in Sports. I know they went out to an event and were congratulated for that. That's a nice award to have. Bravo to the cast and crew of the Winthrop Middle School Drama Society for a fantastic production of Imagination Nation. And then we have some recipients in the chamber. Of Commerce has its Excellence Awards for the town coming up Friday. And for our schools, we have, Rock Mastrangelo is the recipient of the Excellence in Education Award. And if you know Rock, you can imagine how he reacted to that. He does not like to be recognized. Hannah Parker and Robert Rich, students of the high school, are the recipients of the Youth Leadership Award. And again, that will be held at the Cottage Park Yard Club this Friday night at 6:00. Congratulations to the top 10 students and the book club award recipients. I attended that event again at the CPYC. Always a great event to see so many parents and family members come out to acknowledge their students and just be proud. It's just a proud day for them to sit there. We had book awards that, that went out to our students, and I have to give Mr. Crombie credit, that he takes the time, you know, with, especially with the seniors, because this is, these are all culminating events for them, to talk about each student and sort of lay out their profile. And I kind of walked out of there with my hand over my face, because some of these students have just accomplished so much by the time they become seniors. And, you know, you listen to the schools that they're going to, that they've accepted and that they have decided to enroll in. And that's just a snapshot of where these students got into. So it was nice to see the kids' faces when, you know, you're reading about them and they're, they're looking down at the ground, and then they come up to get their award. And it was just so well, well-deserved. And a shout-out to Ms. Jennifer Powell, as well as the PTO, for the work they did for the breakfast, putting out really nice stuff for the kids to eat afterwards. You could see them, they were all starving. But then when they sit down to eat, it's like they just take their time. And they were taking their time, because they have to go back to school. So I'm watching them, and they're like biting and like taking off a piece of a granola bar and slowly eating it. And they were playing the game, and then all of a sudden, Mr. Crombie like rang the bell, and it was time to go. So back to school, they all went, hopefully all of them. Also, hats off to Athletes of the Month for April, Robert Rich for boys lacrosse. They played today at Fort. Varsity played at Fort J V's Plain and Now. Shannon Abbott for track and Bridget Hickey for sailing. And then our advanced drama spotlight. So Ms. Kalinda's advanced drama class wrote and performed a play for the students at the Gorman Fort Banks School on Friday, April 28th. I was unable to get to that, but I did speak with Ms. Pearson, and she said it was amazing, the way, the attentiveness of, of the little ones watching the big kids. And she said the big kids, you know, it's clear that they feel so comfortable around the little kids, because they can see their excitement. So good things happening, and that's where we're at this week.
Wonderful. Do we have any homeschool, oh, are there any questions? Do we have any homeschool applications?
Not this week.
Okay. For resignations?
So personnel, we have no appointments, but resignation. Stacy Lemieux, who is an ESP in our district, has resigned. We have not yet filled that position, but we are planning to. And Teresa Dankner, who is an art teacher, will be resigning at the end of the school year. Retirements, we have no new retirements, and we'll post that art teacher position, the ESP position, and a long-term substitute at the middle school for, it's saying long-term, it's actually short-term for someone out on an illness, an illness. We have no leaves of absence.
Okay. And under new business, we have the superintendent evaluation. Can we just get a quick update?
Yep. We're going to punt that to the next, to the next meeting. I've been, you know, part of the role of pulling it together is going through all of the content and making sure that it aligns with the superintendent's evaluation and an evaluation of her and not the district in general or other people. There were a lot of great comments, but some of them are just not appropriate for a superintendent's evaluation. So I also have some, some, some follow-up questions that I have around the organization of it, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Wonderful. No unfinished business, public relations.
So I think I got them all. Did I miss anything, Patty, on those?
I think I got everything.
I think I got them all. I incorporated them. I've been incorporating them into my report, so it gives you time if you have so it gives you time if you have extra things that you want to add that I may have, may have missed. Feel free to do that.
I loved Imagination Nation.
Yeah.
I thought it was, I thought it was fun, mostly because any, well, not any, but talking about brushing your teeth in junior high, important topic.
Fantastic, thank you. With no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Petrie, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutere?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes. We are adjourned.